Okay, microphones on please, cell phones off. Time being ten o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, God in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please Patty.
Here.
Here.
Here. Oh, sorry, Wanda. Dan, when I was gonna go, okay, now I'm here. Here.
Here.
That should be the worst thing that happens to me.
Ready to go.
It's a good day.
At this time, does anybody have a financial or non-financial conflict of interest they'd like to disclose?
I do not.
No.
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 I have none. Approval of the agenda, entertain a motion.
So moved second.
Motion is second, further discussion.
Only, only thing I said, I know this in the hearing, so we're gonna stack them and get them in. I see it's like ten minutes apart, some of them are gonna be more, some of them are gonna be less.
Yeah, some will be less, some will be more.
We'll just do the best we can.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This time I'd welcome anybody in the audience to make public comment. Hearing and seeing, non-public comment is closed. Item six. Share of budget, come on forward Jim.
Last budget.
Last budget, nothing, nothing surprising as you can see. It's slippery, big huge retirement package in there.
I did not, I didn't think of that. Anyway, basically it's same as last year, other than, you know, factoring in a four percent cost of living, that's what decide to go with and then just the standard grade and step increases. Sure, you had a question, I think we're cleared out. Everybody that's. The one thing I can mention is, you know, jail, I decreased one category by ten thousand. DCI gave us the new AFIS machine, allow that, which is under warranty and that's a ten thousand dollar a year maintenance contract on that machine alone. And since it's under warranty for the next couple of years, we won't have that. So I just shifted that over into supplies, we don't know what's gonna happen, I mean, I mean with inflation, I mean, everything's gonna go up, so.
My, my question is, have you seen a big increase enough for inflation on food, for example, I mean, is that something we should?
Under contract, they, they go by CPI, we had an increase, it wasn't great and it was pretty normal and so, right now, my understanding is the company we used to be with, put a seventeen percent increase on these other counties. Actually looking at the company we have. Fuel, you know, who knows?
What kind of vaccinations do you do?
We offer every employee the hepatitis, the, you know, the series of some, most of them that come have had it, but we just have that there in case they don't wanna get it. Not, no surprises in there, it's, you know, pretty, pretty much the same as.
No, I was just thinking vaccination as in COVID. It didn't even occur to me hepatitis.
Hepatitis, tetanus, you know, blood and more stuff.
For the twenty-four seven, are we still using the machine?
Still using the machine, it's been going well.
Is that, that's cut down on wages or? We don't have it, okay, so it's really a cost savings for the county and, yeah, great, great idea to implement that.
Does that machine pay for itself?
It, it, you can't buy the machine, of course, because it's proprietary technology, so we have to lease it year to year and it pays for itself, yeah, I mean, we have no, we pay one person part-time as the coordinator for the twenty-four seven and we used to have, you know, six, seven part-time people standing there.
Getting blowed on during COVID.
Yeah, and COVID, you know.
Do you see, I'm sorry, do you see any expenses for the jail in the next year? I know you've done a great job of keeping up with that maintenance, but as far as, as you know, there's.
You're going to be looking at probably a security upgrade for the camera system, it's getting to the age where they'll no longer support, that's everything, ten years and they won't support it anymore and that's, that's, you know, probably a hundred fifty thousand dollar expense, but, but you do, you have the money in the, in the capital improvement fund and I think that's still pretty healthy, even after the building of the new section, we still have like half a million in there Patty or more. Probably gonna need, you know, painting, it's a tough part about repainting is when you're full or close to full.
Yeah, you probably don't have a lot of.
I don't think they're there for the ambiance.
No, it's just, when it gets to a point where, you know, cleanliness. I don't have any questions.
No, I don't have any more questions for the sheriff.
Thanks for including all your people and their staffs and stuff, appreciate that.
You know, there, there's some vacancies, we're trying to get that all filled and done for, you know, too long. Applications are slow.
They are everywhere.
The trend.
System, us.
You dig old man.
Absolutely.
Looking for a night.
No discrimination.
Thank you Jim. Okay, I don't see Paul. One minute, okay, thank you. We might as well take that time to, I was gonna say find it in our binder, but he usually puts a complete.
Paul, Paul.
Binder together.
Always doing a good job.
Dan.
Sorry.
See, and then he moved it back again.
We need to budget for a longer cord for me.
If we, the next budget meeting, the city will be at that.
Okay.
When is the next budget meeting?
We'll set it out at the end here.
Well, let's not set it afternoon, because I didn't bring my calendar, so. We're gonna set it, we should set it, while I have people at the office.
You have a calendar on your phone, Wanda.
I don't. I do it the old fa- I do it the old fashioned way.
Time, right? We got twenty-two seconds to get it considered.
You, you wanna do another Friday?
Well, look at that. Slid in just under the.
We're decreasing your budget by a thousand for every minute we have to wait. Just get, I'm, we're jo- we're joking.
We're just setting the date for the next one while we were waiting for you, so.
I know, Wanda, I know Fridays work best for you.
Yeah, you're.
Mike is off Fridays and we need, so we didn't put Mike on here, he had a surprise that he had to.
We can do him on a regular day though.
We might try to set one for a regular workday or something.
Well, or a regular county commission meeting.
Maybe that'll work.
Wouldn't that be next Tuesday?
We do have one, I think we got a pretty full.
Too late to get on the agenda for next Tuesday, his earliest would be July fifth.
Well, let's move on with Paul, keep that in mind and we'll, we'll get a date, I'm sure we'll have a break in between. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. It was pretty simple, actually to me, this year was a little bit more simple. When I say simple was that we went down the line based off of what Patty gave us from what we have spent to the year. We went times everything by three and come out, so.
Overall, point, one point zero three.
No, what I meant was, is what I've been spending, or what we have spent up until April, I figured that's four more.
Oh, I see.
I just took everything times three.
I thought you meant June.
No, 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 and this is where I should be, so then with that, I, other than maybe what the price of gas is gonna do and some maintenance costs, so out of the, what they call the operating expenses and the total or the tangible goods, we cut out eight thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars off the top of the budget, right out of the budget. Out of, out of the emergency management budget. So that I felt that it was not, I mean, there was some places like the two-on-one, we no longer are gonna, we've cut that out totally. Two-on-one now is free across the state. If we wanted to have our texting message, we're like dial eight-nine-eight-one-one, that was gonna cost us twenty-five hundred bucks, well, we use it maybe ten times a year, why, I mean, I could send out a mix all at the same time. And it's a subscribe deal, people have to sign up to get it, so we're not, that, that service, we just felt was not important to have.
I would agree.
Within this, within the deal, so we got rid of that. We took our publishing's down a thousand, we took our rentals down a thousand. Supplies for the LAPC, we took it down, or we actually increased it a little bit due to some rewrites that gotta be done in some books, working with District Three, but yet there's still a fee on those. I had an, an other at the very bottom of the live budget, it's always been kind of a just-in-case deal, we just took it out. I mean, if there's something that we need at the end of the year, we'll just come and ask for, you know, hey, we need to buy this or something happened or, and we'll ask for it back, but to me, if we can skim it out now, let's just make it look good. I, I mean, be more proficient with our budgets. The only other thing that I did do, and I don't know if I, I probably did it wrong, but on the salaries, I went with the matrix chart that I received from, from you guys, Sherry sent it to me. And based on the, the twenty-twenty-three sheet in the Excel spreadsheet, I took the, like, the category eight, am I saying that right when it says OEM dash eight? So line eight, down to.
Grade eight.
Grade, across, is what I put the salaries at, based on what's in this matrix. Now, remember, our salaries, I mean, it's, it's more, I will not deny that. But it brings us up to more, what I feel, like I've talked to Joe in a little bit, once maybe a while back, with Sherry, but I haven't had a chat, but is that with Erin? And in her defense, she could go anywhere for fifty, sixty thousand more a year, because she's a nurse and we don't wanna lose her, we, we hired her to take place when I retire in a year or two, or three or four.
Ah, that's.
But the idea though is, is having that knowledge, I mean, she's, she's very smart in what she does, so I think we should be able to compliment her based on that, she's getting her, all her classes, her training, she just passed her EM one oh three certificate for the state. I mean, so we're, we're moving forward with our training. So what I did was, is I, there was that spreadsheet that was sent out, and like I said, I might have did it wrong, but this is how I did it. I went down line, step on eight, crossed from seven, and that was her fifty-one thousand eight twenty-two ninety-two for her salary. And then on the next one would've been mine, and mine would've been eleven, and I, it took me up to some little, a little more than I'm, or some more than I'm making now, but, and then I added the extra FICA insurance based off of just the standard what Patty gave us in that sheet of what we raise insurance and all this other stuff, but that's all based into here.
Okay, so I'm, just so, I just wanna be clear that I'm understanding you, currently for twenty-twenty-two, you're a grade eleven, step five. And so you have put in here grade eleven, step eight.
Right.
So that's three steps.
Yep.
And you were one that you were going to essentially move from five to seven this year, because you are one of the employees that was greatly behind. Now, she's a grade seven, step three this year and should move to step four next year, according to our matrix. And you've got her moving to step eight.
Seven.
Well, her grade is seven and you've got her moving to step eight.
Okay, then I've, okay, the terminology we're using, I'm using the line this way, not this way.
Okay, so, so this is grade and this is years of service, which is your step, or years in your position, I should say.
Because, I mean, and you all have to hear, what I did was, is that, here's where I was at.
Yep.
So I followed here, this is where she is at in the red.
Yeah.
I took this Excel spreadsheet that was sent out for twenty-twenty-three.
Yep.
Followed them down and matched them up with the numbers.
So you would, you, for you, you would find eleven here and then go to step, you're at three right now, or you're at five right now.
Okay.
So you would go to seven, so, yep, so we can, we can look at that, and there's some other stuff I wanna talk to you about. And you did mention, like, when you look at the, when you look at the matrix, you have asked about Erin's position being moved up, the position itself. Because right now, she's a grade seven and I think you had mentioned actually moving that grade up to an eight. So that's something that we'll, we'll need to discuss.
Sure, and, and I, and maybe I'm doing this wrong, again, I got the lines wrong.
It's okay.
But the other part was, is that it's, I'd rather go work backwards or back down, rather than trying to go up, I mean, it's easier to ask for more and back than ask for more or less than try to go up.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, and the big thing that, to remember is that our salaries are paid half by the state. I mean, whatever we decide we gotta do, but fifty percent of it, the state pays through the SLA program. So our wages, our, our health insurance, our workman's comp, all that stuff, I mean, everything that you guys contribute to our salary gets paid fifty percent back from the state. So, but I mean, that doesn't mean I need.
You know, so the other thing I did wanna state, just because you had said she's a nurse and she can make more money somewhere else, we have to be careful using that argument with employees, because if I got hired by the county as a truck driver and I'm an engineer and I can make hundred and fifty thousand dollars somewhere, that doesn't mean the county needs to pay me a hundred and fifty thousand, so I, and I, I'm not saying she's, it doesn't make her more valuable, but I think we need to be careful with applying it with one position, because then we have to apply it in other positions as well, so not, I'm not taking anything away from what you said, I just wanna make that clear.
I also, in that same argument, I look at the qualifications that come with this, and I mean, I'm not gonna use another agency, because I don't wanna degrade anybody. But I mean, it's one thing to be this, but to have the qualifications that she's got.
Right.
Warrant a little more funding than what she's making now, maybe that's a better way of putting it.
I fully understand what you're trying to say.
Tie it to her performance, the nursing degree would supplement her performance in that position.
Okay, maybe that's a better way of putting it.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Today's my national holiday, it's check day, so.
That is true, we are.
I'm not going.
Twelve kolaches down already today, huh?
Right.
So.
But anyway, okay, so we'll have to go through the, the salary thing, I, I read that, I took that as the wrong way. But like I said, I, we took eight thousand out of the other, because I didn't think it was needed in the budget, you know, I might shoot myself in the foot for saying that because of way the economy's going and stuff like that. I mean, our call responses are up more this year already than they were last year. Our search and rescue team is, you know, assist EMS on their first responder calls, you know, last year we had eighty-six and we're about eighty-five, excuse me, forty-eight right now. We've had two drownings this year already, we've had two, we've had two saves, the search and rescue team. But unfortunately, the people did succumb to, they didn't make it, but that's, we're stepping up, I mean, we're, things are better, more knowledge, more training. You know, so, and in their budget, I just raised it five hundred, excuse me, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. And the only reason that went up is that we have to do the SCBA, that's where SCUBA every five years, they have to be certified that they're still okay to go underwater and that, that service is done next year.
Are we doing most of the search and rescue local, or are we still, I know we help out other communities and counties.
We haven't been out of, out of area, wow, I mean, wow, I'm gonna say we were in Nebraska, but.
Sure.
That's white crane, I mean, down there, it's on, still on this side of the river, we have not been really anywhere outside of our area over, over a year.
Okay.
We are looking at Knox County wants to sign in an agreement to do like a, 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 six hundred dollars for a service.
Okay.
And so we're working on that, that'll come to you guys, but it's something that they know that how valuable it is and, you know, they know.
How expensive, you know, these smaller communities, they look to us because of what we have, but, you know, just, we need to make sure we're adequately compensated for that, you know, not, not to gouge them, but just cover our expenses.
We've kinda taken that, the look at it, or the aspect of it, like the state's, or excuse me, the state passports. First twelve hours are free, after that, you're gonna get killed. So, I mean, if we go down and we're not used, because ninety percent of the calls, if we go out and they have somebody supposedly drowning, we're there maybe four, five, six hours trying to figure out for sure, is that person even in the river? So, is it, was it maybe some gas, you know, not, so, but no, right now, we're, we're watching that really close.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah.
Back to salaries, just one thing, and we can, I can get together, make sure we got the, everything.
Yep.
And then I think in this one, you got a five percent. So that's just something to keep aware of, we'll have to discuss. It's on the salary matrix, at the top, it says COLA twenty-twenty-three one point oh five. That's gonna adjust with however, wherever we end up.
Yep, oh, I get that.
So we'll, I'll get with you.
And that number was based off of the increase. I mean, one point three or one point, one point oh five or one point oh four was what's gonna go in there. But when I moved them up to there and figured that percentage, that's why that went up to that number.
Okay.
I mean, I was showing that it was a, it's a five percent increase, but I didn't wanna say it was, I use your formula, Sherry, of one point oh, I mean, your numbers work, this is what I did to show that, why I was. Other than that, everything else, simple, everything's going good, we don't need any more severe weather, stuff like that, but don't cross your fingers, it's gonna get hotter and heck, and we're gearing up for that for the next week, this weekend.
Extremes.
No, thank you.
Everything else looks good, so I'll get with you on budget.
Okay.
Or on the salaries.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Only thing is that, you know, I, I know you guys are probably gonna get with them offline, is just, I think when we start moving people different steps, we just gotta be careful about it, because you do that to one person and we're gonna get flooded with that, so I.
No, absolutely, that'll have to come to, come to everybody here, if there's grade changes or any of that, that has to be approved, so. Correct.
Or based on the economy, we may have to look at our.
I, I hate, I hate to change the matrix, because we spent so much time on.
Standard.
Yeah.
Standardization within the.
And we didn't get it perfect the first time, but if, if one position needs to be raised, we, you know, either way, we do it all across the board, because if we, we move this person, then the next department's gonna come in and.
Well, to get, so. Sorry to cut you out, just to keep things moving, what will, we, we probably periodically need to review each department as things change and markets change. But if we say a four percent cost of living this year, or five percent or six, whatever that is, that'll go into that matrix.
You just can't leave.
Yeah, and that'll alleviate most of this, really.
Right, that's always gonna be that, it'll follow through for perpetuity, so.
I'm just finally getting Dan trained.
Pat, don't you hear me? She might be listening. No, we'll just go with Pat, we'll, we'll just go with Cody, he's here. Thank you.
Yeah, I can pop up if you want me to, I'm already here, so.
If you're ready, we'll, we'll.
Well, it's, I mean, it's budget, so it's pretty informal. With mine, I did a, you know, pay raise for this next year, propose for the next year, and then the, the four percent, because that's what I was told at the time, and then just added in, and then I just went through with everything else and added a little bit. I noticed this last year, I got charged in insurance and that's a whole building thing. So I put in for the request budget for five hundred dollars, just because that never been there before, so I want it there in the future. You know, because I'm obviously gonna be under, my rentals have gone up, because I've got a cell phone and a hotspot. And that's the same thing with utilities, so that's why I increased all those. Repairs and maintenance, it's currently at fifteen fifty, I figured going up fifty bucks, just because of cost of inflation, that's pretty reasonable. And then, let's see, travel, I only went up two hundred dollars from what my current is to twenty-two hundred. Reason why my butt, why it's even at two thousand, why I'm proposing the twenty-two hundred is, I have a three-day training course that I do in Pierce, South Dakota, then I have a one day that's in Sioux Falls, and then I have another one day, that's a site to be determined. This last year, I didn't go to that one, because I was at training for the National VFW, which you guys don't pay a dime of that, remember? That was in Brookings, well, this next year, it could be in Watertown, we don't know, they'll put it somewhere on the eastern side, but we have no clue where it's gonna be, so I just wanted to make sure, add extra money in there, because I don't see gas prices coming down anytime soon. And then utilities, I increased that to a thousand, just because with the cell phones and whatnot. And then the furniture, I didn't, I didn't know if we're gonna get computers next year, or what's going on, so I just figured, let's put a thousand in there, it's five hundred now, but let's put a thousand just to cover, but, so overall, it brings me to just a little over sixty-one thousand, which is about a ten percent increase from last year, overall, but it's also a projection to be, I believe it was, when I looked at it, it's like about ten percent of less than what I came in at last year. And remember, my la- last year, I went over budget, but there were two of us on salary for about three months, so that makes a huge difference. If I hadn't, if that was at least, you know, that would've brought us in right around fifty-nine thousand, I think, or sixty thousand.
Okay. I wanna back to the insurance, start at that and then go down, if that's all right.
I don't have insurance for the county.
I mean, the line item insurance, so how come there's, how come there's in expenditures that it hasn't been previously?
Because last year, when I first started, I took the insurance.
No, down below.
No, 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 no.
On the second category.
How come it's never been to his line item before? And I just wanna make sure, I mean, it's left pocket, right pocket, I just wanna make sure we're not budgeting for it in.
Both pockets.
Both pockets.
Let me check and then we'll, the next meeting.
Okay, and then, if we go down to rentals, is that basically the cell phone and hotspot or what?
I believe so.
Okay, because then.
That's split up, so ones, ones underneath rentals and ones underneath utilities, I can't remember which one is which, I believe.
Okay, so one of them is for a cell phone and one is for a hotspot.
Yep, the hotspot is forty, it, what, the hotspot is forty and the cell phone is forty.
Okay.
I save money by getting the cell phone instead of asking for fifty dollars a month, I save you ten bucks.
So that's, I was gonna ask how that works.
Five hundred a year.
Is the county's paying that, or are we reimbursing you?
The cell phone is paid for by the county at forty dollars a month, instead of reimbursing me fifty dollars a month.
And that's under the utilities, so the rental is hotspot, okay.
So that saves twelve hundred a year by doing it that way.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest, if my wife watches this, she's gonna be mad, because I've been plugging this. But looking into visible is a service, it's, it's a Verizon carrier service. Cell phone plan with unlimited data and hotspot is forty dollars a month flat fee altogether.
Well, the hotspot I picked up from the auditors, and then the cell phone that come, that's actually underneath the plan through Paul. Or, yeah, through Paul. Or, yeah, through Paul.
He uses Verizon, doesn't he?
Yeah.
Verizon.
Yeah.
But you know, if you need, if you need a hotspot, that would be a good package, because it'd be the cell phone and hotspot all of them.
I'm all for that, if that saves fi- forty dollars a month.
One less thing to carry.
Yeah, one less thing to carry.
Because I actually have that on here, and I I haven't had any issues with it. And so I, like, I'll, I'll turn my hotspot on out at the farmer in the field and get on my computer. But anyway.
We'll have to.
Let's, yeah, we'll.
We'll have to talk with them about it.
Would be forty dollars.
I'm all for that, that's.
And that might be something good to do countywide for these other departments that have the hotspot, because you know, I knew, knowing that. Technology first started out, it wasn't very good, but it sounds like it's getting better, so.
And a good point. The one thing I really like about having my hotspot is, when I go to people's homes, I don't always know if they have internet. The other thing is, is when I go to these conferences and conventions, even though I'm there, I'm still working most of the time. You know, I'm still checking my email and everything, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't really trust those connections there, so that's why I like having my hotspot. Because I have personal data on there that I don't want to get released.
To have a hotspot for you, I I just want to look at, you know, we we should be able to take that twelve fifty plus a. Twenty-two fifty in here, that should be down to four hundred eighty dollars.
I'm all for it.
So.
If we can do it, I'm for it.
The one thing, it might have to be in you and the county reimburse you, I don't know if if that you can sign up as a. The county through the company, I don't know that, but let's talk about that.
Uh one, one thing that's probably, uh just so everybody's aware, is it sounds like the um. Honor our PAC legislation is going to pass through Congress, not for sure yet, uh in which case, uh many. Hundreds of thousands of uh post nine eleven veterans uh with toxic exposure that previously had no. Um, ability to get veterans benefits will likely become eligible, and I. Think that will probably have a significant impact on the number of people he sees, I mean, a lot of these. Young veterans, twenty-five years old dying of rare cancer, uh and we've had at least three or four, and the Yankton community. Now will become, if it passes, will become eligible, so that might see an uptick in services.
It did pass.
Did it pass?
It passed yesterday.
So. It's it's good.
Through the Senate, it has, it has to go back to the House, but, because there were amendments on it, but it did finally pass the Senate, so. Yeah, there there is that also, um, since we're talking budget, last year, I got my GDX. Um, Yankton County brought in uh fourteen, just a little over fourteen million dollars last year from the VA tax free money. So, I don't know if that helps influence my budget or not, but uh thought I would throw that out there, that. That did come back and for a little over fourteen million for the county.
So when we had our department leader meeting, we talked about trying to put as much money, or I guess I, my personal opinion, trying to put as much money in salaries as we can. And to do that, we need to essentially try to hold expenses the same as last year, so when you look at your trend, twenty nineteen was about three thousand. Sixteen hundred, about thirty-five hundred for operating expenses, your budget this year is six thousand. And now you're asking for eighty-five hundred. So I do struggle a little bit in there, I I don't think we should pad things, just because we think we're going to need them, because. At the end of the year, it's easy to buy things maybe we don't really need, because we have budget there. Um, so I guess I would like to see some of those categories under your operating expenses back down, I think eighty-five hundred. Under my goal of trying to put as much to the employees as we can, um makes that hard. So wherein, if you had to cut, and your operating expenses and your tangible goods down below. Where would we cut? So if you were gonna cut back to get to sixty-one fifty.
Couldn't tell you right now, because uh the easiest one would be is we would have to cut down the travel. Which would reduce the training.
Why? I have a question, now the furniture and equipment, did you say you're gonna buy another computer?
That was if they did it, we can take that one out completely, because all my furniture is great. It all works.
And don't, didn't you get a computer last year?
Yep.
So that would theoretically be a.
Zero.
Payless cut.
Thousand dollars off right there.
I would say zero to there, let's find out about that insurance line item. I think the rentals and the utilities, now you'll still have some utilities, correct, Patty, you amortize that. Well, I just mean the office.
Yeah.
The office, so I would put the rent, the cell phone and hotspot together in rentals, and hopefully get that down to. Forty-eight, four hundred eighty dollars.
Because Cody, you still have the office phone. See, now it'll still come out.
What about supplies, Cody, um what do you, what do you need in that office for supply, and how to, I guess, is that for uh. You know, paper and pens and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can cut that one back down to a thousand.
Okay, because that, that's actually, you know, a couple grand right there.
If you look at historic actuals, I think even a thousand.
Yeah.
What, because you, to date, you're at a hundred and seven and we're.
Yeah.
Halfway through the year.
So, cut that to a thousand, I'd be fine, you know, that's, that's even seven fifty, because he has uh in like twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-one, it was. Eight sixty-four, so seven fifty is probably. Middle of the road.
I'd say five myself.
Well, he spent more than that, not that long ago, though, I mean, it was, it was, actual was eight sixty-four in twenty twenty-one, and. You know, we can go less, but then they gotta come.
A lot of that was COVID.
Hmm.
Stuff too, probably. Because if.
Perhaps.
To Sherry's point, and when, and I don't know if we reiterated this at a commission meeting or not, but at, when we held a department head meeting. My stance or belief in Sherry's as well as, is whatever we can do to cut supplies and cut operating, we can give into. Salary increases, and so if we can. You know, if if we can push out a computer one more year, if we can, you know, pinch pennies where we can, and then offer that in. In salary is, is uh my goal and Sherry's goal, I guess. Travel, you know what, you're.
I don't think we should cut travel.
I don't.
He needs a training.
I was gonna say, of all of these, travel to me is probably the one thing you. You know, that's gonna be important to your position, but whatever else we can cut, I would say we.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, I, the, just remember, when I, the other trainings that I do through the VFW, the county doesn't pay for any of the travel.
Right.
None of that mileage, that all goes through them, they pay for one hundred percent of that, so. That's kind of the nice part, is I get extra trained at no cost to you guys, so.
So I would drop the rentals, repairs and maintenance, where did we decide there?
I'm I'm not sure that I understand the concept you're talking about, but cut and operating expenses, so you can increase salaries. Aren't we driven by salaries by our matrix, so we follow a specific format?
Well, we can.
That what we pay people on?
That and we can.
Well, that's exactly right, and that's what I'm saying, that's exactly what I'm saying.
But, but Don, the the matrix factors in a um a step increase every year, but then we also. You know, last year, we put um our increase.
CPI.
Our grow, our CPI, cost of living on top of that step increase, so we can adjust that. We could give them zero, we could, we could only do the step increase, or we could say you get ten percent on top of that.
So next year, CPI is gonna be fourteen percent.
Well, we're capped at three.
And and therein lies, therein lies the challenge, is we have C P I right now, that came out at eight point six percent. State law says our budget can go up three percent, so the county is in a dilemma, and every county across the state is in the same dilemma. And I talked to Minnehaha County about this specifically, so in order to try and keep our employees, so. They don't start going to the city or somewhere else, we have to figure out a way.
Already started.
We have to figure out a way to get around that three percent, to give them closer to what. Reality is, and the only way to do that is to cut the budget somewhere else. And so we challenge the department leaders to look at their other expenses around employees. And say, where can we do this number, can we, instead of the refresh program, which I think we need to revisit even doing that. Because I think computers are rotated every three or four years, can they go five or six? Because then you're cutting your expenses down below, so the goal was to try to keep that flat, if we could. Full while knowing fuel's going up, and we know natural gas is going, is going up, and electricity is gonna be going up here pretty soon. Um, those things we can't always control, but some of the tangible items we can, so by keeping that flat. You can transfer that up and get above that three percent. Now, we also have our growth number as well, which I haven't gotten confirmed yet, so. That's kind of, I think, what we're trying to talk about, is last year, we only applied one, one percent or one and a half percent.
Four, I think.
One point four to cost of living to the matrix, and then everybody got their two percent step if they had a step. So that's, I don't, does that make more sense why we challenge them to try not to increase expenses?
Well, I am, I'm all for not increasing expenses, but I think we're playing a game.
And and to.
It is.
To Don's point too, is is the mission of running the county comes first, so we gotta be careful, yes, I, it decrease where we can, but. We shouldn't, you know, harm the operations of departments.
Right.
Well, yeah, e- exactly, but.
And this department might be different than others, but I think some of the travel. Um, in other departments, we've encouraged to minimize travel, do online training, Zoom training, if there's training courses. You know, that's gonna be an easy way to to try to reduce costs there.
See.
This department I, is, is different, I, you know, I do think.
And for travel. I do have that option, but the only problem is, is I've tried that with doing the Zoom in my office and having to sign up, and doing all that fun stuff. But that doesn't stop the phone from ringing, that doesn't stop people almost knocking down the door, because they know I'm in there. So I have to leave in order to actually have substantial training.
Well, I think the the gist of it is, in the operating expenses, we need to be as lean as we possibly can. And hopefully that allows us to. To put more into that cost of living increase.
Every, every dollar we lose every year comes out of the highway fund, and Minnehaha County said. They they have a growth rate of three or four percent this year, plus the three percent, and the commissioner said. When you look at this number, it's been at at um their budget, he said, in about four years, they'll be out of reserves. And they're gonna have to ask for an opt-out. So growth does not answer the challenge of county government's uh budget. So I I think.
Completely.
At completely, it's it's part of it, but with growth comes cost in your budget, that are much higher than what you're allowed to grow. Specifically court system, sheriff, things like that.
We'll back to Cody specifically, so we can get him back. I would, I would suggest we drop rentals. Combine the cell phone and hotspot, I would just put a five hundred dollar budget there. On rentals, repairs and maintenance. Historically, there are some, what, what are those typically too, I know you weren't here in twenty nineteen, is that automobile? Related, does anybody know?
That's, that's my computer, that's computers and stuff like that.
Okay.
And then in the supplies too, there, there is a fixed one in there, the reason why I'd raise that up to fifteen hundred from a thousand. Was because out of that alone, I have a four hundred, it's gonna cost four hundred and one dollars next year for my application that I use. For my veteran services, it used to be four hundred dollars, they're going up one dollar this next year. I know, it's a new system, so that's why I put that in there, then I also have a hundred dollar fees for um to accreditation for. The organization in South Dakota for service officers, so that's why I put that. What's that?
What category?
That was underneath the supplies, because that's where um.
So the four hundred and one dollars is in supplies.
Yep, yep, so if we drop that down to five hundred, I'm already, I already spent that in one, in one application.
Well, what was that, four hundred and one dollars?
That's for what we call Vetrospect or Tyler Technologies, that's why. Came out of supplies this year.
Because it's maintenance on your computer.
Okay, well, we'll just move it there then.
And any like certifications or anything like that should go under your travel. Patty, your microphone, so.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that gets.
Shut it up. And the microphone monitor.
There you go. Should go under travel.
Okay.
Your accreditation, okay.
Because that's what we put all the counties.
So you're for sure gonna have four hundred dollars into repairs, maintenance, plus uh. See, that typically was computers, and I think they amortize that refresh program. Which you should be putting something, figuring a way for computers anyway, I don't know if we put a thousand dollars on that. Supplies could significantly probably decrease then.
Supplies would be fine at five hundred.
That at five hundred. Your accreditation goes to travel, so I don't know if that needs to increase to twenty-three hundred.
No, it'll be fine at twenty-two, I'll I'll make sure it's fine.
Okay, and then utilities could drop back down to just whatever your office phone and internet is. Electricity, whatever, looks like four hundred dollars would be fine there, or five hundred that you have.
Okay.
That's unreasonable.
Okay, Joe, the insurance is a question mark.
Insurance is a question mark at this point.
And then rentals is five hundred?
I think so, because the only thing rentals would be.
Is the hotspot.
The hotspot, essentially, correct?
No, I uh rent my uh printer copier, printer copier scanner.
Okay.
That's fifty-five a month.
So that's gonna be twelve hundred dollars between cell phone and that, roughly, so that's probably accurate, twelve fifty.
What were you, uh what you put maintenance down to?
What did we say, a thousand?
Then what was supplies? Because I had written a thousand.
I have five hundred for supplies.
So that's four we lowered then. Four line items, right?
Or, yes.
And then we're taking completely off the furniture.
And then.
Office.
Office is completely gone.
Just read them real quick.
Okay, so I've got insurance, question mark, I have penciled in five hundred. But we need to investigate that, rentals remains twelve fifty, repairs and maintenance a thousand, supplies five hundred. Travel at twenty-two hundred, and utilities at five hundred.
And then no furniture.
And no furniture.
It's five seventy-five. Fifty-eight hundred?
Seven fifty.
What number did you get, Sherry?
Wait a second there, one, two, three, four, five.
Fifty-nine fifty?
Yep, I missed it, two.
I got something different.
I got fifty-four fifty, well, you know, the the twenty twenty-one actual cost was what, sixty-three?
Five hundred.
Three seventy-one.
I have insurance added, just to.
We don't need it, it can be removed.
Sorry, Dan, what?
Uh, the twenty.
Uh, the twenty, twenty-one actual budget ended up being sixty-three, three seventy-one. For the departments, I'm, I'm all about, you know, cutting it down. Um, but you know, we gotta. So yeah. It, it'll be close to that.
Okay, any more questions on BSO? No. You have any?
Correct. No, just got one other thing. Uh, just got, found out we got a grant. I worked with you. Talked to United Way, they worked, they called Yankton Transit and Yankton Transit was able to get a grant for veterans. To help with transportation to Sioux Falls within Yankton and whatnot. Um, we. A concern was that people that live out by the river. Transportation is not easy for them to obtain and it's kind of expensive. We were able to obtain a $3,000 grant from United Way. Terry Kirchner wrote that up. Through Yankton Transit and right now the veterans organizations in town are working to meet that to get that up to $6,000. So. Um, and we're asking for more money next year from United Way for, because it is a need that we've seen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll talk to you later about the phones or fatty too. Possibilities there. Yeah, thanks. Okay. This opera.
Good morning.
Hi Patty.
Thanks, very easy. I did, um, sorry. I did uh, four percent as I was suggested for salaries. And then um, the numbers that Patty gave us for a couple other um, in there. And then operating, I didn't change. I just left it. I've been fairly consistent with. What I've been using there.
What is the second item under operating?
That is the $500 is, but I haven't.
It says professional profession.
It, it's supposed to be professional services. Sorry.
I will correct that.
You didn't do it.
Oh.
Somebody typed this up for me. So, and I didn't have her change it. Sorry about that. But the $500 actually, I threw in there a few years back for title insurance if I ever take a property. Because um, we did get, uh, the county did get burned one year. Because I did a search and missed something in my civil searches. But to date, I haven't had to use that because usually those, the state's attorney's office helps me with if I can't serve somebody personally. So then they take care of that for me. So.
So maybe we could cut that. Well, do you have any property that you're taking?
Yes. Yes, quite a few this year.
And with the, what is it in August, they're dropping the no payment for, is it those loans? But I, you know, I know some people have not had to pay their loans on their houses or whatever because of COVID. And I think that's going to end here. So that might go up to.
So far I haven't used it. So it, I guess, you know, if we had to cut some, you know, it could conceivably be cut.
I guess I'm fine with leaving flat as you are, as you have it.
Told you mine was easy.
Yours usually is.
You're fully staffed. You're fully staffed and good to go.
More or less. Yes, we still have one that's do, doing PT twice a week. For, you know, the rest of this month for sure. And then to be determined.
But you have lost some staff though to the city, have you, have you not?
It did, yes. Yeah, matter of fact, we're still, this whole year haven't been fully staffed. That's which, I mean, it works, but I'm not getting a lot of stuff done.
Yeah.
Mainly taking properties for tax, back taxes.
Any other questions for Patty?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
Great. Yeah. Good morning. You gotta remember, do you have two or?
And where is he located? Government Building Safety Center.
Hell, I thought it'd be easier for you guys to find this year. Look how nice I did it.
I know.
Yeah, whoever put these together did a nice job. Good work, you're hired.
Whenever you're ready.
I just here to answer any questions if you have any on, anything that I, I mean, as we all understand, like you said, we're trying to cut. But um, you know, like Sherry said, utilities are going up.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to budget for that. Um, this year we were probably, we're going to end up down on salary. Because we were one person short for seven months. So that'll help a little this year, obviously, but. Um, you know, repairs, things to repair, they just need to be repaired. Um, one of our biggest line items for repairs is over at the jail. The plumbing parts that we need are very expensive and there's only a couple of places to get them from.
Right. Now, when, when there is, cause I remember we had some plumbing issues uh, with the water heaters and the recirculation and stuff. Two years ago.
That's done. Yeah, that's all.
Right, but any, any like odds and ends, things like that, can that come out of the, the jail fund?
I'm going to have to check on that. I'm not, if, if it's for a specific.
Even if it is the judge, you're guys still taking the time to do it. Yes, yeah, yeah, we need to, yeah. Yeah, and you know, just one shower fitting, because everything is, they push one button and they get hot and cold mixed. And it's on a timer. But when it goes out, we have to replace that whole fixture.
Yeah.
It's five, $600 for each one. Some of them last years, some of them a year. Yeah, and it's just odd. Um, but as far as, yeah, the water heaters, hopefully, we, I mean, we've got all three of them replaced. We shouldn't have any issues with those. The recirculation issues that we've been fighting, that's taken care of. I heard, haven't heard any complaints, which is a good thing from court services. About being hot the last few days when it was really hot. So the repairs that we did to the HVAC units with. Hooking up the ducting and insulating, I think has helped tremendously up there. So I mean, we just, it's just a gradual. I hate to say this, but it seems like whoever was in charge previously wasn't addressing things. They were allowing them to go season after season and not fixing them.
That doesn't happen.
You know, so stuff just needs to be fixed. You know, and that's something that I need to talk to you about is we need to start putting away money for the elevator over there. The public elevator needs to be completely refurbished. The solenoids and things like that. Are all discontinued. So when they give out and we don't have any, it's, the elevator is just going to be done. Cause it's that old. We have to, we have to look at doing that. And then the other thing. Um, speaking with the gentleman from Johnson Control, we need to start putting the money away for chiller. So that when that one gives up on us over here.
For what?
A chiller, the air conditioning.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, things have a lifespan. So if we start putting away, I mean, obviously we won't replace it until we need to. But if we don't start putting money away now for those big expense tickets like that. We're going to get bashed with them and, and we, I don't want that.
Uh, that building, how old is it? It's getting close to twenty years. Well, older.
This, this building's twenty-three.
And then the jail is how old now? I mean, it's.
The new jail?
The new jail.
The new jail, well, the, the new jail isn't so bad. It's some of the air handlers and things like that in different areas that were with the original building.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Well, I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is it's getting at to the age.
Oh, sure.
Where the county's been lucky because a lot of that stuff was new, but it's coming to the end of their life like we experienced with the. Hot water heaters and all of that stuff. So, I mean, that's a good point you bring up that, you know, the maintenance is never stops.
Yeah.
You know, I was um, told Jeff that we could accumulate. But um, if you, the year you plan on doing that, we could take it out of the county building fund.
Which should have money in it, right? Yeah, that's what I would prefer, I guess. When there is a big project. That building fund should be able to handle that. We just need to make sure that.
The elevator is going to be over a hundred and twenty thousand. Roughly, and that was the last time I got that quoted was probably six months ago.
More, more now.
More than likely.
Yeah.
Next year or the year after, it has to be done.
Well, it doesn't have to be done.
It's when it.
It's still working, but yeah.
Solenoids. Well, that's what I'm get, I'm trying to estimate.
They might last two years, they might last four, my, four years, they might last six months.
You can't, you can't get any solenoids? Anywhere?
No, they're, wha- what we, what we have in our inventory, which is a few. When they're done, they're done. They're just obsolete. Nobody's making them. You can't get, you can't get them remade. So.
And, and nobody's got any that they're willing to get rid of.
Anybody, well, I guess we haven't checked on that, but I'm sure anybody that had an elevator like that, everything went in the garbage. Cause they're not going to keep them on hand or put them on eBay.
Is the whole elevator need to be replaced or just could we retrofit something like that?
It's, it's basically what I'm going to call the doghouse, the control panels and all that stuff. The elevator shaft itself would stay. You know, and then, speaking of saving money, they. I said, well, what about putting simple little thing like LED lights in the, because it's so dark in that elevator? They wanted $6,000. I did it myself for about forty.
I got a few projects at my house.
You know, ag- again, I mean, we, we try to save where we can, but there's certain things. Like I said, that, that I want to make you aware of that are in the future are going to need to be addressed.
That are coming.
Yes, you know, we, we don't, again, we don't, this chiller out here, again, might last another twenty years. It might last two years. But when the technician says the lifespan on these is twenty to twenty-five years. And we're at twenty-three.
It's usually.
We probably don't want to push our luck and say, well, we didn't know it was coming.
Yeah.
I'm just trying, again, trying to give you guys a heads up on some of the major things that we're looking, gonna have to look at in the future.
Right.
Yeah.
Jeff, did you tell them about your salary? That it was, it's all put in one now.
Oh, yeah, when we, it used to be, and Sherry kind of had it split, those guys split up between this building and that building. Um, and me here and there. And I left myself split at fifty-fifty because I'm running both buildings back and forth. Um, but those two gentlemen over there, I went a hundred percent over there, basically unless we're short here. For a couple of days or we need to mow there over there. And the same thing with Jonathan. I mean, he, he does this building mainly. We do take care of, of course, the extension and EMS buildings also, but that is what it is, a few hours a week.
Right.
It's just a little easier for everybody to. Figure everything as that, okay, this month, we need sixty percent of this person's salary for this line item.
So you've got two full-time over there, one full-time over here and you're fifty-fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other specific questions on certain line items operating? Fortunately, you're one of the departments that you're bound by. The increases that we're going to see.
Well, and, and as far as supplies, I'm always looking to try to find places that we can, can get different things, you know, a little cheaper and. And still, um, well, here, this is a dumb one, but the Swiffer's, a little. Fuzzy thing on the end of the Swiffer's that my guys use, they're getting them from coal. They're ten dollars for a pack of ten. I can go to Menards and buy a generic brand, a pack of ten for a dollar and sixty-five cents. Guess where we're going to buy them from now?
Yeah.
That's a huge savings. Even if they use twice as many, they're still saving.
There's eleven percent off this week too.
There's all of it. And, and you know, and that's something there to that rebates, I save up the rebates obviously, and then. And I know most people don't like the Kleenexes we have, so I've been using some of the rebates to go and get. Some of the things that are a little nicer like Kleenexes. I mean, they're all expensive anyway. And kind of bring that back into the budget for nothing, basically.
And, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, you do a great job. Jeff told you that before. I think this is a department too that, the. Job market is really affected. I know you've struggled to maintain some people and hire new ones, so, and. But it's fully staffed now.
Yeah.
Great deal.
Yeah, the new hires working out great.
Okay, awesome.
I don't foresee any issues with that.
Did that roof get taken care of, right?
They're still putting new roofs on, yeah, from.
Let me know when they're on that. I'll take a, like to check. I don't have any more questions.
I did wanna, in the county building fund, there's a, almost a hundred and seventy-one thousand in there now. And then the jail building is six hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Okay, so, thank you. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
I say cool this weekend.
Yeah.
Wits.
Jim.
How you doing?
How we doing?
Good. Let's stay cool. Basically, my budget didn't change from last year, other than the personnel expenses were increased.
Sure.
It's kind of where I expect to be, I guess, if we're looking at any cuts, it will be trying to navigate. Chemical storm that's going on.
Oh, man.
You haven't switched to corn knife yet?
I do carry all trucks, actually. Yes, that's us standing out by the side of the road with a knife.
I didn't have any questions.
I didn't on this one.
Thanks for coming down.
Any others, anybody else?
No questions on that one.
Thanks, Jim. Unscathed, thank you, Jim. Okay. Best nurse, come on forward, yeah.
Hi, Jim.
So did you guys have any questions about anything?
So you should have nurse and wit, correct?
Yes.
So everybody, there's two of them.
I guess my only question is the, the operating expenses under, other than other, what, what goes in? To that, I see you have it budgeted for twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five, so.
That's the money we, we sent to the state for what, oh, it comes out of there.
Okay.
And the nerve, I think, yeah.
I was gonna say, that's in the nurse one.
Yeah. So that's the money that goes to the state. Is there a possibility we could have it labeled something than other, I guess, when people see it? I just don't know what, I mean, i- it's an important thing and it makes sense, but you know, when somebody who doesn't know sees it, they're like, uh, other, you know.
I can see if there's an account number.
Okay, and so that goes to the state for the wit program.
Nurse.
No.
Nurse. The wit has their own. And that's for the wages. And that goes into the wages.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Everything going good?
Yes, yes. We're gonna hit one year next one, so.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. I saw Steve in the hallway. Are you out there, Steve? We're a little ahead, less bright there. I was gonna say Brian might be. We're a little ahead, less bright there, I was gonna say, Brian might be, might be. If you're ready, Brian, you skip, we'll go right to you.
You weren't waiting, I couldn't come down earlier.
Nope, we just just wrapped up.
So, my increase is due entirely to the cost of living raise, the matrix steps and the anticipated health insurance increase. Everything else I cut, I cut my budget for rentals, repairs, maintenance, supplies, travel, furniture, all those things I trimmed down some considerably. But the overall increase is due to those first three items.
Right.
I budgeted more than usual in that modernization and technology fund, because we've been talking about replacing some of our computers either late this year or early next year, you know, the refresh we do every three years. So I'm gonna try, rather than lease, like most offices will, I'm gonna try to just pay for mine upfront out of that fund.
Okay.
So that's why that budget item is higher than usual. Save the interest.
Brian, you have fifteen for the M and P R fund, right?
Right, that's because, you know how most offices, when we do a three-year refresh, they'll pay twice a year installments for, you know, six installments over three years. So I'm gonna pay for mine upfront on a technology fund, I think that's acceptable. I mean, I don't think the state auditors will object to that.
No.
And that's something we've talked about with other departments, maybe if we're gonna revisit that refresh program.
We're pretty fortunate to have that M and P fund, the registered deeds offices. We got that through the legislature, I think it was about ten years ago. When we did a revision of our fees, we went to a flat fee instead of a per-page fee. And we had to go back a couple years in a row, myself and a Mini Haha Registered Deeds and Sully County Registered Deeds testified a couple years in a row to create that M and P fund, and the second year we got it done, it's been great.
Yeah, and that, but the M and P R fund has hundred nineteen thousand.
I know, I it it accumulates faster than I spend it, obviously, and I suppose at some point, that'll be an issue, but.
Well, I didn't have any other questions on.
Nope.
Oh, I did have one, you've got in permanent notes, there's a two and a half percent, is that accurate still?
Well, I think that's what I wondered. That's from a previous year, I think.
That's what I wondered. You had in here the regular matrix with four percent on there.
Well, the cola, you know, is four percent, and then, you know, I have a couple of staff who've got ten plus years. And so, you know, I think they're due for two steps each, you know, you can tell me later if I'm wrong on that, cuz that's what I have budgeted.
Look at that, okay.
They're pretty low on the scale, and so I would think they qualify for the two steps, but I know you have a formula that may or may not agree with that. A part-timer, she works about seventy-two hours a month, and she's been making sixteen seventy an hour, which it's a little on the low side, so I budgeted an eight percent increase for her, which would take her to eighteen dollars an hour, you know.
Sorry, what's she at currently?
Sixteen seventy, just doing an exceptional job. Doesn't cost us anything for benefits, you know, and works eighteen hours a week. Probably gets more done than a lot of people do in thirty-five. But so, those are the payroll increases. I think they put in four point five for health insurance, that's what we were asked to estimate at. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
You bet.
Hawkins, if you're ready, we'll take you.
Okay, um, good morning, everybody. It's gonna be a fun-filled day for you. It's a fun time of year, I'm sure, doing budget stuff. So I have like four points I wanted to make, four line item to discuss, and then, oh, oh. If it's okay with you, then we're just, I'll just answer questions.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so the first one is, um, the salary and wages, I did budget for an additional, um, full-time paramedic, as we've talked before. That we're having trouble with staffing, especially Mon- Monday through Friday during the day. What I really would like, um, is to have two full-time paramedics. But when I was playing with that, it just looked a little sticker-shocky. You know, didn't kind of throw up in front of the board, um, right away, but if there's, um, if you would entertain that idea to get me two paramedics, I would certainly work up the numbers real quick next week and get them to you. The reason that, um, the one paramedic will help fill the holes that we have during the day, we are certainly, one, the part-time paramedic. Uh, one part-time EMT away, if that person happened to resign or go away. We would really be hurt, and so that's, um, so it's really important that we get at least the one, okay? So, yeah.
How many full-time do you have now?
Um, this would make it eight full-time employees, nine full-time employees.
So you have.
Said I did that right?
You have eight. You're counting more than paramedics there.
What's that?
Are you asking for just?
How how many full-time, and then how many?
Myself and Brenda, and then, um, five paramedics.
Five others?
Seven full-time?
Yeah, yeah.
Seven full-time? And you wanna go to nine?
Yeah, I would, yes, Logan. Leanne, Daniel, Jean. And then, right now, we're.
Didn't somebody just?
What's that?
Wasn't it in the paper, somebody just quit?
Yeah, we had a couple of part-timers that resigned, yes, yes.
Do you have eight? You have six paramedics, you and Brenda.
Yes.
Okay, so you're you're at eight and you want to go to ten?
Yes, okay.
Nine here.
Nine here, but eventually to ten, if we can find it, we can figure it out, and you know, make it work to get ten this year. Then I won't, won't go after that that tenth one next year, but I will be, you know, eventually be trying to improve and increase that.
I think the hope, too, would be to decrease some overtime.
I'd have, you would decrease overtime, it would decrease the part-time wages, um, I just have to put it to a pistol to paper and 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 make that, it won't take long to make that that adjustment on my, on my spreadsheet to make that happen. And Sherry's got a question, I could see.
No.
How can I get, okay, one of the, one of the things that with the additional two paramedics, is this is what happens when I try to do the recruitment. Is, first thing, the employee asks is, what is the benefits? What are the schedule? And by the way, how much do I make an hour? So, um, the schedule is really daunting, it's really a daunting schedule. With the ten paramedics, we can go into a thirty-six-hour rotation. Um, which will drop our overtime significantly. And people like that whole idea of working a thirty-six-hour work week versus a fifty-six-hour work week where they're at now.
Do you have, uh, any temperature of that market? If if we opened it up today, how, when would that be filled, do you think?
That's a really good question, that that, um, well, it's a, it's a topic of conversation that we have amongst um, my peers, as we've got all these paramedic classes that are graduating paramedics, and where all are they going? So we've asked the schools to kind of track some of that, to find out where they're going and what's keeping them from getting into the field positions versus, um, but, you know, a lot of places are, a lot of hospitals. Um, in Nebraska and Iowa, hire paramedics to work in the emergency room, which obviously gives them a better schedule and a little more money, and they don't have to work in the field, so. And then I believe COVID was another one that kind of turned people away from the, from the, from, from it too as well, but we're trying to figure out, and trying to figure out recruitment retention things.
So the the eight twenty-five column, that's for one additional full-time.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on that.
Yes. Then, um, the next line item that I wanna discuss is my, uh, maintenance one. And that, I, Patty and I have not been working the right schedule for me to ask her this question, but one of the things that came up, Patty, was I, um, I wanted to, um, update the floors or redo the floors on our upstairs area, that tile area, and you know, that type thing. Will that money come out of the general, or the the building budget, or do I need to budget for that?
It's a county building.
County buildings, okay, well, then, that's a six thousand dollar thing you can change right, right now.
So the forty-eight?
Yeah, out of the forty-eight, two sixty-two, you can subtract six, six thousand, that sounds like.
So can we just say forty-two thousand?
Yep. Yes. And then, um, no. The next line, um, is the supply budget, which is kind of a roll of the dice for us, cuz we're, we're don't know what's gonna happen with supply, so I just increased it by six point five percent.
What's the difference between supplies and first responder supplies?
I'm sure what's the difference?
Yeah.
Okay, the difference is that we give them, um, give our our first responders in the county supply money, if you will, um, just to help them with offsetting some of their costs with.
So so supplies are your supplies and first responder supplies, maybe for Leicesterville Fire Department?
Yeah, Leicesterville, Paul and.
So those supplies, their first responder supplies go for organizations outside of Yankton County EMS to help, help them.
Outside the city.
Up outside the city, yeah, I got.
Little first responder.
Got it, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any possibility that we, uh, over-purchased supplies in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, that we can coast a little in twenty-three?
Run up again, expiration on something.
Yeah, all of our stuff has an expiration date, we kinda, Danny does a really good job of keeping us kind of at our part and keeps re- re-resupplying us as we go.
No, that's fine, just I, just make sure we can, cuz you know, a lot of the Germax stuff, we bought, you know, we loaded up on, I always wasn't sure.
We purchased that as needed, but Paul purchased a bunch of that during the pandemic, um, to stockpile, so if we get to a point, we can always, you know, get some of that, but I really don't know how much of that is left.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that, I just wanna make sure that it was
Yeah.
not missed or something.
Yeah, yeah, we're certainly not, um, ordering a bunch of equipment for the.
Right.
Yeah. For doomsday, or whatever. And then, lastly, um, I budgeted initially, um, twenty thousand dollars for the ambulance replacement accumulation fund. But, and I did that because that's what we, like, you know, put in for last year. But after, um, reconsidering it and talking to Sherry a little bit, it looks like we probably should go up to at least fifty thousand, because, uh, ambulance that we purchased now is a hundred and forty-nine, and in another year, that could be up to, you know, into a hundred and fifty is easy. So, somewhere between a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty, you know, um.
Didn't we just get a new ambulance?
We haven't received it yet, but.
Well, I know, but we didn't.
We try to rotate our animals every four years. They'll put some at about a two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar file. File mark on that, on the ambulance.
So what, there's a there's an accumulation fund for that, so if he puts looking four years out, if we're gonna expect a new ambulance, hundred sixty thousand. Forty thousand a year, start putting away.
Now, that's separate, what's the twenty-five thousand there toward the bottom, the furniture and minor equipment, what it?
Oh, that's the, um, those, that life pack lease, and this is the last year of that lease.
Can we get new life packs again?
Yes. Has been like a, 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 a thrown under the saddle blanket, um, yes, we will be getting new life packs, and, um, one of that, uh, with that, with the new life pack, we'll be able to sell our old ones. And hope, you, and that's
Yeah.
how much we will get. That's gonna be market, we could sell them or we can trade them in. And then, what we're hoping to do with that money is to get some of those easy loads into the handles. I think Troy talked you about that, what I was.
So does that need to be budgeted?
For the easy loads? I talked to Patty about that, and she said, no, we don't, cuz if we get money, um, we'd be like a grant money, and then we just purchase something that would be, uh.
Kind of going to the, it's that unanticipated revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
If, cuz you don't know sure, for sure if you're gonna get the money.
Right.
Just didn't wanna.
So.
So, yep, so you didn't have any capital notation here at all on the sheet?
Accumulation.
Accumulation, yeah.
There isn't?
Accumulation isn't anywhere, but I do.
That was a, that was a.
Because your fund is in the general fund, so it'll go as a total underneath general.
There's a line.
Okay. I think I, I, I don't.
So is there?
You've got a complicated one.
Yeah, usually we have.
You know, so I, I think, looking forward, I think forty thousand dollars, if we're planning in four years to buy another ambulance, forty thousand a year, it should, it's a hundred and sixty thousand in four years, it just makes sense to set that money aside now.
Where does that go in this?
It's a capital accumulation fund, it's not.
But so it's not.
Anywhere in your book yet, okay, so.
You'll.
We do that for emergency management, too, don't we, for their their vehicles?
We started.
Now, Paul didn't have any, he didn't ask for any this year.
How many miles do you usually have on those ambulances, when you get rid of them every four years?
But two, somewhere, we hope to get rid of them between two and two fifty, two hundred and two hundred and fifty. I think this year, with the one that we're gonna get rid of, is gonna be, you know, right at that two forty, two fifty mark, being a little more, because it's taken so long to get that chassis.
Yeah.
Which I just spoke to them, and they still, um, haven't had a
You were saying, one of your ambulance boxes that we remount is getting pretty old as well, like from then, was it the nineties or something?
I think we fixed that last year.
Okay, so that's, okay, okay.
Yeah.
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 They all run together, don't they?
Yeah, seems like it, seems like it, okay.
And so that was like, the the four points I wanted to bring up, is that, do you have questions for me?
So are you asking this year for two additional staff?
It would be wonderful.
Only one.
Two additional staff.
What would your number be?
I can get that to you next week, if that will work. An exact number.
And and the reason it for asking for an additional person is?
To, um, work on retention recruitment, decrease the number of hours that the medics are working. It would decrease overtime as well.
Of that grant that we did, oh, geez, been a year ago, for, uh, what was it, something for calling with the insurance, Senator, I think Troy was doing that, have you seen, uh?
The Daniel one, it was the community outreach.
Yeah, has.
I can't remember the.
Well, the community outreach, the community. We didn't follow through with that, because, um, um, I thought that I had spoken to you guys about it, but we did not follow through with that, because, uh, um, all of a sudden, it went from, uh, just a a class a week to fifteen hours of credit hours, and it was, we weren't gonna be able to afford.
Funny how those grant grants do that. So we we ended up not following through with that, okay, that's, that's great, so.
I think we'll look forward to numbers with the second full-time.
Okay, very good.
And then, uh, I'm just thinking out loud, it might be something where we put an ad out. And if you have two qualified applicants, it's serious consideration. If you only get one, that, you know what I mean? You might not get two choices.
That's right, that's right.
But.
See what it looks like.
See what it looks like anyway.
Okay, I will get those numbers to, who wants them? All of you?
Yes.
Okay, well, Dan, you want me to do it?
Talk about it Tuesday.
Okay, all right, very good. Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Enjoy your afternoon.
Thanks, Steve.
So you want forty into the county accumulation? Yeah, for now.
Yes, please. Okay. Mister State's Attorney.
Does the four ninety-seven include the new person?
Yes.
You're going to have four, four attorneys?
No.
And there.
That adjustment would just would be
What?
The increase in wages that are proposed. So nothing in addition, no additional staff. Besides what we currently have.
You have three, three attorneys and then how many, uh, how many total?
Six.
Six.
What falls under professional services?
Uh, when you're hiring, um, like an expert or like that.
Like?
Like a DNA.
Somebody on, yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah. Regarding twins.
What about?
Supplies, what do you guys use for supplies?
Paper. Paper, paper is a big one.
Paper's expensive.
It is, but you've only spent fourteen hundred dollars so far this year.
Well, then we're watching our pennies. That's also, just to note though, that's first quarter only.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's not to this day.
Oh, okay.
Want to be, it'd be paper, files, you know, there's a file and everything, you know, anything that comes from like a.
The new computer system, is that in here?
Don't think so.
What was your question? The, um, software we approved to help organize and reduce the one that sends it directly to the lawyers, et cetera. Does that need to be on here?
Yeah, probably, we should probably put it in here, yes.
Cause that paid half.
Yeah, that half is paid.
We paid half.
Is that professional services then?
Yeah, I'd be, yeah, I'll, I'll have her put that in there because I honestly, I forgot about it. But January is when they're putting it in, this coming up.
Right.
What is other?
On that presentation.
Robert, what is other?
Just other miscellaneous things that we did include in the budget.
Scratch tickets, beer.
Yeah, well, thanks for noticing.
Well, there, those are other things.
Bribery, you can't have bribery as a line item, so.
Well, that should be, that should be a cost reduction though.
Yeah, that should be, no, Wanda, I think it's just things that we just forgot that could be some other place, but just a miscellaneous catch-all. That's all it is. And if you see, it, it was twenty-five on the first quarter, that's it.
Is your no, new program going to go under furniture and minor equipment or somewhere else?
Um, I probably think under professional services, I think that's what we're going to add it. And it isn't in here, so I'll, I'll, I'll have to get it added. So I apologize. I, I honestly, I forgot.
So. Is it going to be year, every year?
No, whoa, yeah. There's going to be a maintenance, there's going to be a what?
A one-time big fee and then a little.
Pay the other half and then a maintenance.
See, I think the one payment that should go into professional services and then your yearly maintenance, that goes under maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So put that in there. Thanks, Patty.
What do you call that program? It had a name. I just thought maybe he knew it, because.
Yeah, carpal, that's it.
There you go.
Look at that.
Carpel, carpel.
Someone's paying attention back there.
Nice job.
That somehow short for we're going to screw every county out of money.
There, we'll take advantage of the COVID relief funds and go that route.
As the JDI, JDIA or whatever it is, has that had any impact in your budget yet?
It, it isn't not yet. And it's going good too, Don. He's doing good. Alec. Mark is doing very good. And then Deb's working with him, so we really ramped up the program. So I think it's going really well. We met with.
That's what I've heard, talking to you.
Yeah, he's done good.
He enjoys just working with Deb.
Yeah, and honestly, I honestly, to say something kind of bad, I, I honestly thought we would lose him relatively quick. I thought we, the Boys and Girls Club would lose him because he's a very talented, nice person. So I thought he wouldn't be around in a year and he is, and he's doing fantastic. So we really like him. So, so far it's been pretty good. And it does relieve pressure from the courts because you're, you're doing it in-house, as we all know, in-house diversion program. So nothing on our budget because we're not doing anything in addition. But, um, we'll probably use Mary a little bit more in that. And right now we're using our intern in that to kind of meet with the, the kids and stuff too. So she's kind of starting to assist too. So we got a law clerk that we just have for free over right now, and she's really been wonderful. We, we really like her. Good, so very excited, very go-getter, everything.
So are you going to hire her to fill that slot?
No, 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 she's just a first year, second year now. So she's just here, part of the school.
I thought you meant the, the law clerk, law clerk, not the intern.
The intern, intern, yeah, 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 that'd be right.
Threw me off there with your terminology.
Myself off too. The first half came out of professional services. Okay, what was the last thing you said? For the first half or whatever. So we can add in another seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five into professional services. And then probably add something into that maintenance. And then we'll have a maintenance. I don't remember what that is off the top of my head. And John, I'll, I'll get that. So we have it.
Seven two thousand.
Seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five.
Do you think that we can reduce, you know, the supply department? If you guys are sending digital files with that new system that we could see a reduction in?
Oh, yeah.
That then, I mean, I, I don't want to, maybe, maybe something there to your, your point, Wanda. I mean, it, that's the reason I think we, it was presented as, and, and it seems like it.
Yeah, that it would be a money-saving feature.
Yeah, and what I do think it will too, you know, it's going to all be, and it's going to be time-saving also. Because it'll be simplified, notices will be generated automatically instead of us generating them. Everything will be filled in automatically.
Do you think we could go from eighty-eight in supplies to six or sixty-five?
Or, um, or, or six.
Six is fine, okay. That, that'd be perfect.
Six thousand and what?
Supplies. That should, yeah, that should be fine with that.
You guys still use books?
No.
You, okay.
We want to, you, you got two thousand budgeted for books.
The only thing that we have on is we have these, the books with all the criminal stuff in it, it's one, but I, it isn't, they're not that expensive.
No, they're not.
They're like.
Which, which is why.
Hundred a piece. I think we have three of them.
They're what?
Like two, three hundred a piece is what I.
They're not even that much.
Okay, it could be less.
Cause I write the checks, I know they're not that much.
But that's all we get is that, we don't update anything else.
And, and the furniture?
Books, okay, I see books, yeah. I don't care if we want to put, um, furniture down to five thousand.
Why don't we put it down to one thousand and use the rest of that money to pay for your carpal?
About twenty-five hundred. Why else I go crazy here?
About fifteen hundred.
Okay, I'm okay.
Good negotiation.
Whoa, it's stressing me out. Fifteen hundred's good. And then the books probably keep it two, I don't, I don't, what do you know?
Furniture is what?
Twenty, um.
Fifteen hundred.
Hundred. And I guess, and we can probably do a thousand on books. I don't think we really spend much.
I would think you could do five hundred on bucks. Cause I know which books you get, because I.
Yeah, let's do five hundred on books and then fifteen hundred on furniture.
Carpal is paid, so right there.
That'll be good. So. And then, uh, three thousand on scratch tickets. I don't even know if I've ever done a scratch ticket. I didn't know, I didn't even do that, so. Have to adjust the revenue side of things. Yeah, I gotta try that. We're going to get the money back.
Well, if you just take a few bribes.
Yeah, yeah, kind of like Fauci. Kind of interesting. Wasn't bribes, it was, uh, what did he say?
Incentives?
Incentives, maybe it wasn't incentives, it was, uh.
Patents, royalty.
Happy rights.
Royalties, did you receive royalties? Or that's something we don't have to discuss.
How did this get onto political?
She was talking about bribery. All right, back to it. Okay. Any other questions for?
Nope.
Okay, and I'm okay with those. And the only thing I probably need to add is the maintenance repair. And I assume that's a, a set number. So I think that, that'll be whatever it is. And we have in there twenty-five hundred, so that might not even be much of anything.
So you're going to send over a different one with, with a carpal in it?
Yep, I'll make the changes what we just discussed.
Okay.
And then I will, the only addition that we didn't discuss, which I'll add, would be the number for repairs and maintenance. And that'll be that carpal software, whatever that number is. It's five thousand, okay. So five thousand, thank you, Valley. Okay, so then.
In maintenance?
Add five thousand to it. Yeah, five thousand to maintenance, seventy-five hundred. Okay, so does that mean, do you guys need me to give you a revised one or I don't have to because you're not?
No, you're good.
Okay, good, thanks. Okay, okay, thank you. I dropped.
I think Jessica's out there.
How about zoning?
Well, there's, there she is. Could we get a revised one of these? And then we've made a lot of changes to them. And if we miss them, you know, something on all these line items, because he's going to add a bunch of stuff that we don't have with the carpal, which I don't know the final numbers on. I guess I, I would like to see a revised one where we make these changes. Cause you might have something written down different than I do. And if we're going to approve it, the final budget, it's going to be what's in front of us.
I think usually what Patty does is goes and she enters it in her system and then prints.
Yeah, cause I don't have any of these entered yet. So it'll be after.
Okay, so we're going to get another one to go through all these.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll get you a whole new one.
Thank you. Jessica.
I don't know how this starts, so I thought I would start out on a good note. Last year, my office gave back forty-six thousand eight hundred and nine dollars, so we'll start with.
We appreciate that.
We're expecting that again.
At this year.
That's your new benchmark. That's how government works.
That's what I've heard.
Use it or lose it.
Just because you have it doesn't mean you have to use it. Right, right. Um, so Patty, you might've had two from us, but one, the first one we sent had a mistake. So the, I sent a second one and I think that's what they both got, right?
Oh, wait, that's this one. We're not in the book anymore.
That's mine.
Yeah, we are. Some of us put it in the book. Took the other ones out. Just saying.
So of course the ones that went up, um, and not as much as it was, just because we lost, or I guess not lost isn't the right word, but people have left that had higher salaries. So with those adjustments, it didn't go up quite as much as it could have. So the salaries did increase and then the biggest increase is the insurance and that's with the higher premiums and that fun stuff.
So what do you, what are professional services at your office?
Um, professional services is, that's one, that's a hard one to judge. It's generally saved for, if we go to O H E, um, with appeals. And background checks comes out of that for new employees. If we need to hire an outside attorney for some reason. So that's just kind of more of a, if we need it, we have it, but it's not always used this year. We did use it a little bit more. Cause that's where, when Matt Archer came in to, um, help train us, that came out of there.
But usually you, I know you came in and asked for authorization for that. And I guess I, that could probably go down some. And if there's something that is different, whether it's litigation or additional training, you can do a great job of coming to us. I, I think that could go down some. Cause historically you haven't used, with the exception of this year, haven't even come close to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I mean, the goal always is to not go to O H E, so that would be ideal. If one aspect of the budget had to be cut, I'd rather that than anything else.
We're in agreement. What would you like to see that at? She'd be fine.
Well, she'd like to see it where it is, obviously.
Well, I mean, and, and we've, we've discussed this with other budgets, if it's not.
Well, I know, but I don't think where she'd like to see it at would probably be higher.
Yeah, I would have.
Cause that's the American way.
Um, I, I guess looking, looking in the past, it, it's been one, seven.
Historically low.
I think, you know, somewhere, I'd be fine with somewhere around five hundred. And if it's more than that, she does a great job of coming in and.
Well, it's twelve hundred so far.
But this is a, what, maybe a, a one-time thing for training with the amount of turnover that they had this year. I don't see that happening every year.
Could, could you live with a thousand, I think is what he's saying.
Could we negotiate to fifteen hundred?
I was at five hundred.
Oh, see.
Could we talk about anything else you'd want to cut before I figure out how much I'm going to cut?
Well, I, I'd like to talk about repairs and maintenance. What does that entail?
That is, um, the bulk of that is our program stuff that we have to purchase. So our, um, cost manual that we have to have to assess.
And the thing that you guys put up on the.
The, uh, like beacon, yep, that comes out of there. We have a program called ProVal that our cost manual works with. That's what houses all of the data about the, every property. So we, we just have to have those. Our I T comes out of there, our copier lease comes out of there, uh, our shredding. And then, um, we contract with microfilm imaging, which is through the register of deeds, which gives us access to all the deeds and plaques and all that stuff. So that comes out of that budget as well.
Is that, what is that? Cause I have a very bad copy. Is that forty thousand?
Forty thousand eight hundred?
Uh, forty-five, forty-five thousand.
Forty, forty-five? Forty-five?
Sorry, those lines are small and my hands are, my writing.
Use pencil?
I did. For.
Five thousand on that.
For repairs and maintenance, that's.
Forty-five.
So I actually brought that down. If you look at what we're currently budgeted for, forty, forty-seven thousand three hundred.
Is it forty? That's what I.
I, it's like forty. Oh, it's forty-five, I promise. I put forty-five thousand eight hundred.
So.
I'm going with the person who wrote it.
We've got a faint copy is all, Jessica.
That looks, that looks like a zero.
I swear, because I brought it down.
I thought it looked like a two, but I'm taking her word.
Are these, and, and, uh, this is a good point, a little off subject, but, uh, do you guys have the ability to type these out? Instead of handwriting them?
Or they could just use a pen?
Well, or, or, well, so, some, some of the budgets are, if we have the ability to.
Your copier was, didn't you say, Jessica? Well, this, this was that new sheet that you had said, the original one was the bad one. But, um, I mean, yeah, if you want, if you want to print it next year.
I, I would really like that, because that's, that's hard to read.
I know, but if she copied it, wrote it, wrote it with a pencil, copied it with a pen, or it would be fine.
Typed it in the computer. Typed it in the computer.
Alright, work on that for next year, Jessica.
I'll do that, I promise.
It's easier to tell what the updated one is, but.
Professional services, let's pick a number and move. It's not that you can't spend, I mean, if, if you end up at O H E.
Yeah, there's, I have no control over that.
Right, we're not gonna say, well, you didn't budget for this, so you lose.
Okay.
I'd like to see it at five hundred, and Jessica's gonna have a great job when she needs additional training or whatever, she comes to us anyway. Uh, it, with the exception of this year, it hasn't ever been, you know, much over that, so if we're looking for areas to reduce, I, I would say, go with that one.
If you did end up at O H E, do you have an idea what that might cost you?
Um, it would just depend on if we had to hire a private attorney. I don't, I don't know what those scenarios would entail. It just kinda depends on what the appeal is, so that would add significant amount. Um, otherwise, it's hotel, gas.
Sure.
Food.
When's the last time?
Thousand bucks.
That county has been in O H E?
Uh, I think there was an O H E pill, twenty nineteen, and I think they stipulated, so they ended up not having to go. I think it's been quite a while since that.
Okay, so I mean, it, it doesn't happen o- often.
But there's never been this type of market either, and there's never gonna be the type of potential downside that there's gonna be, so we'll see.
Thousand dollars, okay, if everybody?
Yes.
On the grand scheme of things, I think.
Let's do seven.
We're talking a couple hundred dollars on a.
Thousand?
On a sixteen million dollar budget.
So the repairs and maintenance at forty-five eight hundred, so far you've spent in the first quarter, sixty-two hundred, so.
And the bulk of those bills come in November, so we'll have like eleven thousand dollar bills in November.
One eleven thousand?
Two of our bills are eleven thousand.
For each?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, we essentially know what those are gonna be.
Yep.
That, that number's pretty solid.
That, that's history. I was able to drop it a little bit this year, um, from the forty-seven three last year, uh, which it had been because I cut a couple services that we had, so we no longer need those. Um, a couple went with G I S, and since we don't have in-house G I S, I was able to cancel those subscriptions. So this is a pretty set number for what we need.
Okay, and what number do you have for travel?
Travel is one hundred percent our education, uh, account. So we have, I have twenty thousand dollars there because we have Andrea's now an assessor, so we have five people who are required by the state to go to a conference in a school and workshops every year. So I added a little bit to that budget, um, because we now have five that have to go, and it's required by the state to keep our certification up.
They can't share hotel rooms.
No.
So it's five oh five two hundred, and we took out fifteen hundred.
Looks like it.
Okay.
Three seven?
Yep. And on the rentals, um, side of things, that's for refresh. Um, I did add a little bit there, just because the cost of everything's gone up. I don't know those actual numbers, but one thing that I have been interested in is, and I don't know anybody else, but I did talk to I R A T about it. Um, I'd be interested in maybe purchasing our stuff outright, and so maybe I don't get six new computers at that three-year mark, but I build up the budget yearly, and then I can just buy what we need, um, instead of doing this lease.
That's kinda resulting the issue in.
Oh, good.
Department, so we're, we'll revisit that, so.
Okay.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with the three thousand for the budget, but I think we do need to revisit that across the board.
You know, and some of that you can put in, uh, put in, um, extra money in data.
All right, any other questions for Jessica? Good to go.
Perfect.
Unless you have anything else.
Uh, just something for the data budget, but I don't know when that is, so I don't know when you talk about the data budget.
There's some things, if there, if, um, that the I T people do, and there's that, uh, monthly, the refresh, there's for that, that comes out of there, and anything, um, that they do, that is not for the department.
Okay, cause, well, that one was, I just had the, um, a meeting with pictometry, and we have the new estimate for that, and that went down quite a bit, so.
Same that pic, pic, that goes into data.
Yeah.
Is, is your office at a hundred percent strength now, or are you still?
I, I did, I just hired someone on Monday, so we are going to be at a hundred percent for the first time.
A long time.
In a long time.
Great, great news.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
All right, so like, like a few others, basically mine only increased by the proposed wage increase, and then insurance, those were my two main changes. Um, I did move a thousand dollars from furniture, which, as you've heard, most people don't need furniture, to supplies for the possibility of, of, uh, getting a new computer. Mine is three years old, and one of the things that John, the I T consultant, had mentioned, and it sent a note to all of us, is that he feels that maybe we should move more towards they purchasing off the state contract, and that's how the school does it, and we wouldn't have these interest lease fees and things in the future, and so I, I encouraged him to come and talk to you all at one of the meetings to discuss that. Um, and if we can move forward that way, and like, like a couple others have said, and pay outright out of our budgets, I think that's maybe benefit to all of us, so. So basically, that were, those were my only changes.
What is repairs and maintenance?
Repairs and maintenance for me are basically, uh, let's see, the Arc, Arc G I S maintenance software, and then the sixty-nine hundred for another year for the Beacon Electronic Permit System.
So do you use the same beacon she uses? As separate subscription?
Paid us and equalization and we all paid our share, or us two paid, probably paid for it.
And we get reimbursed from the city, too.
Okay.
How much?
And we only have one more year left on that contract, so.
How much was the Beacon online permitting?
Uh, sixty-nine hundred a year.
So equalization doesn't, doesn't pay that one, that's the, it's still under Beacon, but it's an online permitting, so that goes to them.
And then I pay fifteen hundred a year for Arc G I S maintenance.
Any further questions for Gary?
What do you hire for professional services?
Um, well, the bulk of it goes to planning District Three, like thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand of it or so, and then, uh, the rest is like a few others, if we gets, have a lawsuit or need to hire an attorney, that kinda thing, so, or an engineer, surveyor, or something like that, that if we would need to.
Maybe we'll be done with that someday.
That would be nice.
Hope springs eternal.
Where's your hope, Don, right?
Realism.
Yeah. All right, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Gary. Great. Got Sarah might be, uh.
She's on another, she can't, she couldn't come today, she'll be at another meeting.
Okay. Auditor, but might as well get that done. I was gonna say maybe a quick break, but let's, if we're okay, we can push through and get auditor done. That as a yes.
I basically, just like, um, mine, like all the rest is the wages, and my, um, operating expenses are basically the same. I did lower one. And I did put in, uh, thousand for furniture, minor equipment.
Any questions? Great.
Did you say conservation was not coming?
She couldn't make it, so she'll be at another meeting.
That's fine.
Great. That's it for auditor. I will open up for public comments. If anyone in the audience would care to make public comment, now is the time. See, non-public comment is closed, and let's have a quick discussion. Um, so we for sure are gonna need, uh, conservation, highway.
City.
City. Extension.
What about, I know the city usually covers the, the center.
And the other people.
Yeah.
The library.
Pathways, transit, all those.
The library.
They'll be under the city, when the city comes in.
Yep.
And the city in the center, and then, uh, historical society.
Boys and girls. They came, did they not?
No.
Oh, no, Kramer Canyon came.
Well.
They're gonna come July fifth, the historical.
So I think I would like to see, um, you know, these departments come forward.
Contacts and.
He has already been here.
Yeah, he did come.
And Yankee Transit.
Transit came.
They came.
So I would like to go through these that we have not done yet, and then probably at that same meeting. Uh, maybe by then we'll have heard from the city and everybody, or maybe it'll be at that same meeting, but then we need to probably have discussion on, um, cost of living increase at that point, and maybe that, we have to wait until we get all this changes through, and kind of our discretionary spending, where we're gonna be on that. We have all that one meeting.
Yep.
And in, income.
And then we have to have the revenue side.
Yeah.
I don't know if we.
And I'll have that at the next, and the next one. All right, I'll send it to you.
We shouldn't have to wait for cost of living.
What, oh, it's three, it is three points, and I think.
But you haven't changed anything in the budget.
Well, right now, everybody.
It's the one percent of the budget we've adjusted.
Right now, everybody is budgeted for a four percent cost of living adjustment.
Okay.
Is that where we wanna be?
That's what I say we need to discuss. We don't have to wait to do that to get this, these sheets updated.
Oh, right, right, no, no, no. What I'm, what I'm foreseeing is we, we hear from them, um, we look at any changes, we look at our discretionary, we look at the revenue side of things, and that's gonna tell us a lot. And then we need to narrow down where that cost of living is, and I think we can start those discussions now, if we.
Patty, do you know what the growth number was?
I have a, an estimate, um, the C, okay, the C P I was three point one, growth one point six.
So that's four point seven. C P I can't be three point one, can it?
It's three, I'm sorry, it's three.
Okay, yeah, there you go. And then one point six.
One point six for growth.
Which is fifty percent higher.
More than what we're.
Sixty percent higher than normal.
So that's four point six of total of increase.
So we had tentatively just said C P I was gonna be three, and we figured a one percent growth, and that we would. So our budget will grow that much, we assumed we would put that towards salary. So we can, we can, like I said, we go from zero to whatever we want in that category.
And I've kinda estimated what the general fund for an increase in tax, about three hundred and fifty thousand extra that we can increase the dollars.
One point six or seven for growth?
One point six.
Six.
Run that three percent, that, or the three point, and then growth for the towns and townships and, you know, schools, there is decided by the legislature, but road districts, you know, they'll all get that one, three point increase, and if they have growth. So some of them will be increasing too.
Yep.
Just that, uh, probably a general comment. Have we given any thought to items that we have had in our strategic planning sessions that could impact the budget? Most all of this has been historical. You get one percent, or half a percent, or two percent, or whatever. We haven't done anything about our C C G planning, uh, issues that I know of.
You're right.
What, do you have a particular topic on strategic plan? Are you talking about like the, uh, um, plan to replace some equipment with the highway department? I know that, or, or, did you have a, I know that's a big one, and anything else in particular, Don?
Well, the road, road and bridges.
Yeah.
And, uh, lots of things that we're looking at down the road, but everything we've done today has been, you know, you're a hundred dollars too high, or a hundred dollars too low on these items, and it doesn't make any difference.
You're right.
What makes a difference is what direction we're taking this county in the future, and that's where strategic planning comes in.
So I.
I, I think one of the big budgets, we, we did get to hear today, was Mike's highway budget, and I don't know if anybody looked at it, it was eleven million dollars. That's twice what it normally is. So to get to your point about the big ticket items that are gonna cost us money, we budgeted in to get, um, the bridge near Stone Church done there. He's got some equipment in there, um, a huge amount of, uh, overlay, not like two-inch overlays, but the, what we've tried, been trying to do to upgrade some of those roads, um, so, so that's huge, and that's spending into our reserves.
Oh, into that effect. That's where I think we'll have a bigger picture once we see these other, cause yeah, this is just getting the departments and where they're gonna be. There's not a, there's not a lot of savings and wiggle room in any of that. It's, to me, we need to, we need to hear from the others just to, um, understand their budgets, and then when we've got the revenue side of things sitting here, as Sherry mentioned earlier, unfortunately, any shortcomings come out of that highway part budget, and some of our
Well, that's strategic planning. That's what's happened for the last sixty years.
Yeah.
And it happens with every county, because we have to pay for the sheriff, we have to pay for elections, those are all required by, by law, and the biggest department that, that's just how it has, has to be. It's unfortunate, but it's reality.
I, I would encourage people to go through that highway budget before the next.
Do you wanna go through it now?
No, cause Mike's not here, and he doesn't have his list of projects, and I didn't.
Right, I'm just saying, get, get a heads up, it's big.
It, it's, yeah.
And, and what I can do next week, I'm gonna, I have to go to peer next week for an auditor meeting. Um, I can, what we have and what I figured for revenue right now, I can, that sheet, that shows everything at the end. You know, I can just plug in the figures estimated, and just to see, kinda see what we're at, what our total budget might be with the revenue, and, and I'll send that to you guys before.
And I'd like to see in the process of, uh, the thorough analysis of where the government freebies have gone, and where we plan to have them go. Government freebies have gone and where we plan to have them go. All the gifts we got in the last two years because of COVID.
Oh, the seven million dollars?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's third of the year's budget.
It's a year of taxes. Cause we collect about seven million dollars in property taxes for the county every year, so we got a year of taxes from the feds. And we've been putting a lot of it into surfacing roads and that bridge is, next year is gonna be a good one.
But I think that's something that we, we need really to let our citizens know so they understand.
Absolutely.
What's happening.
Cause I, you know.
Which I don't.
The only reason we can do those things is because COVID occurred, absolutely, hands down.
Maybe ninety percent of them don't care, I don't know, but.
Yep, you're right, Dan.
That's prudent to make sure that those dollars are spent wisely, I mean, you don't wanna squander them, so. Okay, anything else at this? Figure a date for our next meeting.
Nice to have Mike here. During the week. So.
And I might be gone the week of July eleven.
July first.
July first.
That's probably not gonna be a good one, just with a three-day weekend already.
I could do June thirtieth. I could do July seventh.
Would June thirtieth work for people?
That'd be a Thursday, Mike could, Mike could be at that one, that works for me.
I'd say pencil that in, I'll contact. Let's, can we do?
Zero, what time, ten?
Ten.
Nine?
Nine? Okay, nine.
Seven?
Right now, I have a free, free day, so you wanna start at six, I'm okay with that. Okay, and then I'll, I'll contact the departments, that was um conservation highway city extension.
Historic.
She's so much like that.
They're gonna be at a regular meeting. We see, we need to do ours.
I'm sorry? Commissioners.
We gotta, we gotta do our budget. Let's do it, can we?
Yeah, yours, guys, I put in it four percent. So what did we say, June thirtieth at nine?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there anybody else we missed? Otherwise, I think we've got all the departments.
Here we go, coroner, conservation highway city election, one, two, three, extension, sorry. That's five, right?
Which one am I missing? Who do you have?
Coroner.
Yeah, and I don't know if the coroner ever actually comes, do they? And it. We'll just cover.
Yeah, she's come, but I mean, it's, that's pretty cut and dry, really.
Depends on how many deaths there are, really.
Okay, pencil in June, uh. Pencil in June thirtieth, nine o'clock. I'm just gonna put the caveat, that'll hinge on, I'll talk to Mike right after this. Cause that's probably the ma- most important.
You're telling us this one is you.
Most likely. So, okay.
You're setting up for check days now, or you'd be here.
That I'd entertain a motion to it, you're.
So moved.
Hold those in favor. Any opposed? Motion passes.